We will call to order the Norfolk School Committee. Today is Tuesday, June 11th, 2024. We begin this meeting, as we always do, by reading our mission statement. The Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment, which meets the needs of our diverse students. Through school, family, and community partnerships, we offer an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world. And I have a roll call.
Lauren Davis.
Grace Lockhead.
Lisa Joplin.
Thank you.
Make sure you're still down.
You're good.
We're going to start with public comment, and I just want to review the public comment rules and parameters. We do have a policy. It's very important that we adhere to the policy and follow it strictly. At the start of each regularly scheduled school committee meeting, individuals will be invited to address the committee during a 15-minute public comment period. All speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in a respectful manner. Speakers must begin their remarks by stating their name, town or city of residence, and affiliation. Assuming that four or fewer speakers sign up to engage in public comment, each speaker will be allowed three minutes each to present their material. And we have four tonight, so three minutes each for those who are speaking. Speakers may not assign their time to another speaker, and in general, extensions of time will not be permitted. Public comment may concern items that are not on the school committee's agenda but must fall within the scope of the school committee's authority. Therefore, any comments involving staff members or students must concern the educational goals, policies, or budget of the Norfolk Public Schools, or the performance of the superintendent. The chair of the meeting may not interrupt speakers who have been recognized to speak, except the chair reserves the right to terminate speech, which is not constitutionally protected because it constitutes true threats, incitement to imminent lawless conduct, comments that were found by court of law to be tamatory, and/or sexually explicit comments made to appeal to perient interests. Verbal comments will also be curtailed once they exceed the time limits outlined in Section 3 of this policy. Speakers may offer objective criticisms of the school operations and programs as concern them, but in public session, the committee will not hear personal complaints of school personnel, nor against any member of the school community who do not fall under their jurisdiction. Under most circumstances, administrative channels are the proper means for disposition of legitimate complaints involving staff members. Written complaints longer than three minutes may be presented to the committee before or after the meeting, for the committee members to review and consider at appropriate time. In a disclaimer, public comment is not a time for debate or response to comments by the school committee. Products made at public comment do not reflect the views or the positions of the school committee. Because of the constitutional free speech principles, the school committee does not have the authority to prevent all speech that may be upsetting and/or offensive at public comment. So with that, we do have four speakers tonight. First, Jack Olivieri. We are going to set a timer, and as soon as it gets loud, we will ask you to stop. And if everyone could just respect that rule, that would be great.
How many want to go?
Do you have to go go mic?
Yeah, in order for Karen, you need them to speak to the mic for Karen.
Where's the mic?
Do we get a check room?
Sure, and you pull that chair over to the side.
Oh, absolutely, sure.
Did I?
That one will open.
You want to start?
Yeah. Sitting down, but you can stand up.
This way?
No, wait, don't. There we go. There you go. I'll just jump on that, too.
Okay, ready?
Ready?
Go. Okay. So my first question is about Norfolk students. As you've probably heard in a lot of cases, especially at the town forum, there's a lot of anger in town. And one of the many questions we have is, why are we spending, it seems like, an inordinate amount of time on the migrants that are coming in here? And we don't seem to be spending nearly as much time on the current students in Norfolk that are here. So one of my questions is, how are we going to ensure that the quality of education in the town does not suffer? Because the Board of Selectmen have pretty much unanimously said that when this facility gets opened and is here, we will not accept a decline in safety or the quality of the education the students have. So I think the first priority is to put together a plan as extensive and comprehensive as you're doing now for the migrants for the town of Norfolk's children. And I think that's a primary concern to a lot of people. So in along with that, I'd like to know what are the metrics that you're going to use to do that? Because that's not going to be easy to measure, but you have to measure it. Are you going to baseline kids before they come here? All children? And then measure them periodically through the year? I'd like to know that. Number two, when we run out of space at the schools, okay, are we considering modular spaces? And who gets to stay in the modular spaces? If you need that. I assume you will. Is it going to be Norfolk kids? You're going to expect the Norfolk kids to go in here? You expect the migrant kids? Or both? How's that going to work? What's the plan for that? Another question I had was, can we expect naturally larger class sizes? If we get 450 families and we have 150, 200 kids, how's that going to work? What's the plan for that? We had, at the town forum, we had a lot of discussions, and we had a lot of questions that the state couldn't answer. And in fact, I think they had even less chance of answering questions because they put off the education piece of this. So I'd like to know, when are you going to expect hard answers from the state? When are you going to push back to the state? Or are we just going to roll over and try to do best we can? I think a lot of people are expecting you all to push back on the state. You know, a lot of people, including some very close friends of mine, saying, it's a done deal. We have to accept this. We have to make the best of it. No, we don't. No, we don't. We can push back. We have freedom of speech. We have the freedom to educate our kids the way we want. And this is frankly, another situation where I'm fed up with the state trying to shove something else down our throats. And we're sick of it, okay? We're tired of it. We've had enough. Enough is enough. And that's my three minutes. Thank you.
Next, we have Lindsay Mallard.
I'd like to request that multiple school committee members be on all discussions with the state or DESI where plans and solutions for educating and integrating the homeless and migrant students are being discussed. These are elected representatives that we have chosen to advocate for our children and should be involved in all of these discussions. I hope that the school committee will commit to maintaining our current levels of education and programming. There's a whole lot of talk and planning around how the newcomers will receive the education they need, but the forefront of every decision should also be on our current students and how this instability will impact them and potentially take away from their education. How will teachers be expected to manage the impact of students leaving and new students starting every 45 to 60 days? How will this not become a continuous distraction from our children's learning? What are the quantifiable metrics the community can use to gauge how this will impact our children's education? Besides MCATs tests, which are always a year delayed, what metrics can we see that will tell us how this is impacting their education? What is the current possibility of class sizes increasing? Should we expect larger class sizes, less one-on-one attention, and longer wait times for access to special help resources? The state can accommodate the impact on Norfolk's emergency services with more funds, but extra money won't solve all the issues here, especially when the answer is likely going to be larger class sizes and probably adding several kids per grade per class. Why is the state not looking at other solutions? And are you pushing them to do so? We simply do not have the capacity to take on the numbers the state is talking about. What is the plan when there is no physical space? Norfolk schools should put a hard limit on how many kids we're willing or able to take in. Force the state to prioritize bringing in families with pregnant women or children under the age of five. If 80% of the families there did not have school-age children, many of the concerns and issues we bring up here would be mitigated. It seems like there are enough families in the shelter system to make this number-one criteria, and should be pushed at every opportunity. Have you asked the state if they're willing to put a cap on the number of students entering our schools that reflects what we can realistically take in? The state's plan will not provide a quality education for newcomers or current students. When and how will newcomers be assessed or screened for proper placement into grade levels? Will this be done solely on age at first?
Next, we have Tyse Sipman.
Tyse Sipman, 32 Fredericksen Road. So I'm not here to talk about the shelter. I'm here in my capacity for the CPAC, and we understand there's a vote tonight on nominating a CPAC liaison on the school committee. So we just have a memorandum of understanding that we'd like to submit for public correspondence to the school committee, and I'll just read it so it's on the record. It just outlines how the relationship would work between CPAC and the school committee. So this is the memorandum of understanding between the Norfolk Parent Advisory Council and the Norfolk School Committee. The purpose of this MOU is to establish the collaborative relationship between the Norfolk Parent Advisory Council and the Norfolk School Committee specifically regarding the role and responsibilities of a Norfolk CPAC school committee liaison. Our mission statement, the Norfolk CPAC mission is to work for the understanding of, respect for, and support of all children with special needs in the community. CPAC collaborates with the Norfolk Public Schools to ensure that students with disabilities are provided a free and appropriate public education in the least restrictive environment. Roles and responsibilities for the school committee liaison. We hope that this position would be responsible for communication with CPAC officers, specifically informing CPAC officers of any school events that would be of interest to the CPAC, informing the CPAC officers about any school issues and changes in special education programming or staff. Attending school committee meetings, obviously, and informing our officers about any issues that may be important for the CPAC to address or be aware of. Attending town government meetings and informing CPAC chairpersons about any issues that may affect the special education community. Attending CPAC meetings periodically and reporting back to the school committee on the results of these meetings. And then for the Norfolk CPAC, our responsibilities include communicating with the school committee. The CPAC chair will communicate any challenges, issues, or concerns that need to be addressed in the special education community to the Norfolk School Committee Chair, providing feedback and recommendations to the school committee to improve special education services and programs, collaborating with the school committee and the Director of Special Ed to advocate for the needs and rights of students with disabilities, and actively participate in scheduled meetings to discuss and address special education issues within the Norfolk Public School District. We hope to establish a meeting calendar between the CPAC, the Norfolk CPAC Chair, and the Director of Special Ed. And these guidelines were referenced from the National CPAC Guide, and we've noted that here in the MOU. So I'd just like to submit this as public correspondence for the Norfolk School Committee. Thank you.
Three seconds left. Finally, we have Matt Feller.
So there's been a lot of decisions made in a vacuum, I feel, by the state that directly impact this town and our children. And I think at this point, enough's enough in the full, you know, thought of transparency. Like I said earlier, will school committee members be included on the calls with the state in DESE, where the plans and solutions for the education and integration of the homeless and migrant students are being discussed? Will they be there? And when those plans are made, will they be made public to us? When and where will that happen? Will we be having more frequent forums over the summer to provide the town with updates on those plans with clearly defined goals and objectives, full understanding of how our school system, how our children are going to be impacted by this? Point two, right? I don't think it comes down to capacity, right? We simply don't have the capacity to take on the numbers the state is talking about. Again, part of that plan would be, what are we going to do? Right, as we've talked about modulators, we've talked about using closet space, we've talked about all these different opportunities or options. But again, nobody's presented a clear, concise plan as to how this is going to roll out. Agreed, there's going to be pivots. We're going to learn along the way, but the state, the selectmen, the people that were in town a couple of weeks ago, no one is forthcoming with a plan. So I'm coming to this board to ask you to show me something, because it's my children that are going to be impacted. The biggest part I have, or the biggest question I have, is how are you going to confirm the ages of students if their birth certificates aren't available? How are we actually going to know that we're not putting a 14-year-old child in a classroom with 11-year-old children? There's a big concern I have there, based on just things that are going on in the news, things that are going on in the world. There's a concern. How are we going to validate date of birth? And finally, I would agree, right? Just in closing, we need to take into account how these migrant children are going to be impacted, but I really do think we need to step back and take a look at how our children in this town are actually going to be impacted. We're not talking about that. We're talking about these migrant kids and how it's going to work for them. Great, I want to know how it's going to impact my kid. My kid's going to be impacted, both of them, and they're young. I need to have some answers.
Thank you. Thank you for public comment, everyone, for contributing to our meeting. We are going to move on to correspondence, and we do not have any at this time. So moving on to the school committee chair report. First, we have some gifts to approve. Give the attach especially, were you able to find them? Okay, so we have a grant from the NCL. It's a charitable grant to Robin de Cherry, who is the tech integration specialist here. And is this for the science kits?
Yes, I believe this is for science resources from the Museum of Science, but I will verify that for you. But Robin is our technology integration teacher, and she frequently writes grants to bring equipment into labor space and additional supplies for the engineering staff. So I know it is targeted for that, but I'll get you exactly what the intent of the grant was.
And then we also have, and that was for $1,050. And then we have a gift from the sixth-grade promotion committee of $4,100, and those go towards the Boringdale scholarships. So looking for a motion to approve the gifts as written.
Second.
Any discussion?
So are you looking to understand better that the grant is going to be useful?
Yes.
Yeah, so she went to the Museum of Science, and they did a really fantastic opportunity for educators across not only Massachusetts but nationwide. And they looked at all different engineering resources and lessons. And the Museum of Science, in collaboration with DESI, has created some really fantastic interactive, hands-on lessons that they put into kits that talk about, that kind of address different engineering standards. So for example, one of the things that they did was how to create an automated dog door, right? And kids had like a little sample kit, and they have all the materials. So what we're hoping to do is to kind of add some, a little bit of those standards into our carbon science curriculum. So we, I know Robin was looking into introducing one science engineering project next year for Grade 2 and Grade 3. And so that's what, and all the funds were, which were able to get kids for every student. And that's something we'll be able to use year after year. We would only have to replenish some of the kind of consumables that are consumable, but the way the kids are set up, they're very, they're very like common household items. But the students will be able to do a really rich engineering project in both Grade 2 and Grade 3.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is the NCTV School Committee reporting. So as our meetings are longer right now, they're probably going to be longer throughout the course of next year, I was thinking about how to make it easier for people in the community to access the information they're looking for faster. So I did speak to NCTV, and they said they can bookmark all our meetings, like post the agenda below in the comments, and then bookmark it so people can see where we're going to talk about the emergency shelter and go right there. And just thinking about other things going into next year, about how we can make our meals more accessible to people looking for information. I know Ingrid mentioned that DESI, when they post their agendas, there's a link within the agenda item that takes you to the specific box.
Oh, cool.
So these are just two things I'm thinking about right now, but collectively, just maybe in the future, if we just want to think, maybe even that summer, how can we make the work that we're doing?
Maybe add links to the exhibits, too, because those always seem to be hard to find. Super easy.
Lisa and I had also talked about putting a link to the meeting in the Wednesday's words that goes out once a month, so that it would be right there for people if they wanted to click into the meeting or to.
Should we write like a recap? Or just kind of?
We could do the agenda and again bookmark the different sections of the meeting. So we'll look at that with the summer.
If anyone else has ideas over the summer or thinking, anything, just throw it out there, because I know people want to find what we're talking about.
They're not sort through all the stuff they don't want to.
So item three is the school committee liaisons to the CPAC, the PTO, and the LPAC, which was referenced earlier. So other school committees I've seen have a direct link to these school organizations. So it's less of that they come once or twice a year to present, but it's more of a regular check-in to see what they're talking about, if it's under our purview, if we can advocate for them, and just increasing the collaboration and connection. Some school committees do it different ways. Some have a formal policy that they submit. Others have subcommittees, and others just have chair-appointed liaisons, so not voting on them, but just every year, when you reorganize, kind of like we reorganize in our committees, we just would do that at that time. And the way I kind of envision it is very much like the memorandum that was read tonight, but I think having it not in a policy gives the liaison and the organization the flexibility to do what they want. So if the LPAC wanted to check in, you know, one phone call before the meeting, just to give a brief update on what they're doing, and then it would be an update in the subcommittee and slash liaison reports. I think it would be nice to just have a continuous conversation rather than just once or twice a year. But I wanted to see what you all thought about, if that's something you're interested in doing.
It is something that the select board has, a select person that is assigned as the education liaison. So if we have questions, I think we want to bring forward, we have a DESI, we need to go to person, a liaison for police. I have a liaison for deputy W. So it's a similar sort of structure. We don't necessarily use it all the time, but I do know if we have something we want to communicate to the board, I have a directed person to reach out to.
Yeah, I didn't think about that, in that direction, too.
So would you be looking for the liaisons to do readouts like we do for the building committee if there was something happening in that group? You know, if a representative couldn't be there, PTO, CPAC, LPAC, that they would potentially report out to this committee as they would in any subcommittee?
Yeah, I picture it, but if you have a different. You know, that the liaison would connect with the chair of any of the organizations before.
Anything going on, you want to highlight if you're.
Right, exactly. Or we talked about this at our last meeting, it might be of interest to you. Just opening those collaborations, I think this year, there's a lot of uncertainty. I think we need to focus on highlighting the good, too, and connecting people and increasing collaboration, I think.
A great idea, that's okay.
So I'm happy to, if no one else feels strongly, to be the liaison to the CPAC. I don't know if we want to reach out to Peter and Dor and see if they have a specific interest in anything, but throwing it out if anyone has a specific interest.
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to do any of them. I mean, I can take that, the LPAC. I don't want to take it from Dor or Peter if they're interested in, too. So I mean, we can also rearrange, I guess, next meeting if they were really adamant about taking it from me.
And if you want to take LPAC, I would actually, if it's okay, Lisa, take CPAC, because I already worked with the PTO on some stuff, so it could give me, I've never worked with CPAC, so it could give me some insight into.
Yeah, if you have any interest.
Yeah, okay. We can also leave PTO if we have, until the next meeting if they want.
Yeah, we can.
But if they really want.
It sounds fluid, so we can, if it's not set in policy or a vote, then it's more just like.
Right, I think it's just something nice we do at the beginning of each year to make sure we have these open lines of communication. The next item is a letter to the state advocating for funding for students residing in emergency shelters. So again, situations change, it's very fluid, it's changing all the time. There is uncertainty, there are different personal opinions outside this committee. I think when we are acting as a committee, our role is to position the schools as best we can, no matter what happens. And I think the way we do that is by making sure we are funded, because I think the worst thing that could happen for everyone is to have these number of students come in and then the funding is not there. So the $1,000 DESI grant is pretty firm. It's in the budget, and people feel good about that. The $104 per student per day was part of the governor's supplemental budget, and so that is due to expire in December. I believe they submit that budget around September, and then it's finalized. So I feel like we need to get in front of it. So I've written to Governor Healey, Senator Roush, and Representative Vaughn, encouraging for the funding. I can read it real quick, it's not that long, and then let you guys discuss and see if we want to submit it as a committee, or happy to submit it as a prior citizen if you're not on board. So it says, Dear Governor Healey, Senator Roush, and Representative Vaughn, we, the members of the Norfolk School Committee, are writing to urgently advocate for the extension or renewal of the Emergency Aid Reimbursement Program that provides crucial financial support to schools for the education of students living in emergency shelters. As you are aware, the current program, which allocates $104 per student per day, was part of the state's supplemental budget, and it is set to expire in December. We are particularly concerned, considering the recent plans to turn the Bay State Correctional Center in our town into an emergency overflow shelter that will house up to 450 people, a meaningful portion of whom are anticipated to be students enrolling in our schools. Given the significant impact this funding has on our ability to meet the educational needs of these vulnerable students, we strongly urge you to consider extending or renewing this essential support. While the creation of the Emergency Overflow Shelter may provide immediate accommodations for those waiting to enter the Massachusetts shelter system, it highlights the urgent need for sustainable, long-term solutions to address this complex issue, and the critical need for comprehensive support and additional resources. Given the substantial impact the Emergency Overflow Shelter will have on our community's resources and infrastructure, it is imperative we receive adequate support from the state to ensure that children residing in the shelter and attending our schools receive the assistance they need. We proudly stand by our mission statement, the Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. Through school, family, and community partnerships, we provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world. We firmly believe this applies to every child in our buildings, including prospective children joining us from the shelter. With that said, uninterrupted assistance through our state emergency reimbursement program is essential for us as we strive to address the needs of some of these most vulnerable community members while not compromising the quality of our current programming so that all of our students can thrive. In light of these considerations, we urge you to prioritize the extension or renewal of the Emergency Aid Reimbursement Program for schools. Thank you for your attention to this urgent matter. We look forward to your support. So I would need a motion to submit a letter as written to Governor Healey, Senator Roush, and Representative Vaughn, and then you guys can talk.
I want to submit it. To submit it, okay. A second. Discuss, but I appreciate it. I appreciate you writing this. I think this is, you know, obviously, one of the core issues that we'll be facing. You know, I'm pretty adamant that putting money towards it is not going to solve all of the problems, but if we, the worst-case scenario is, we have 150 kids here, we get the money, we hire the staff to support, and then December is gone. And what would we do? I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's our role to advocate for the students, and that is what this is doing. I think it's great. I, you know, it's a really tough thing that we're going to be facing, and I agree, running out of money is, would be really bad. So while it's not, you know, it's not going to solve everything, it's at least going to start advocating for something that could be a problem in the future. So I have no problem looking forward. I think it's really nice to be.
I really tried hard to keep all motion out, to keep it straight to the point.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so.
Yeah, we already moved.
You already moved, so all those in favor?
Aye.
And that is the end of my section. I will turn it over to.
We'll get copies out for people to sign?
Yeah.
The first thing I have tonight is, we have Dr. Anna Tucker here, our Director of Student Services, and she is going to provide a debrief to the committee, I'll give her a minute to connect, on the regulations for English-language learning instruction and some recent changes to the state requirements. So she's going to provide overview and take questions for the committee.
So she's going to provide overview and take questions for the committee.
Okay, great. So thank you for having me tonight, I appreciate it. I wanted to come and speak a little bit about our mandates and guidance around educating students who are English learners. So in other words, students who have and speak second languages, either as a primary or a secondary language. And so I wanted to come tonight and talk just a little bit about our Massachusetts state mandates and our guidance around some of these educational components. So very similar to special education, we have state and federal regulation around educating students who have second languages. On November 22nd, Governor Baker signed what he would call the Look Act. And basically, what the Look Act does, it aims to provide districts with more flexibility to the language acquisition programs that we decide as a district will meet the needs of our English-language learners. So this law is actually overseen by the Department of Education, very similar to special education. So every six years, the Department of Education comes in and they monitor our ability to implement these mandates. So in other words, we have. So recently, and we had some updates to this policy, and I just wanted to quickly go over those updates. But basically, we had some updates around programs. So in other words, district can choose the best language programs for their English learners, and all these programs have to be based on research and best practice. In terms of educator and program standards, every single educator in Norfolk and across the state has to have an SEI endorsement. So in other words, we have to take a course and we have certificate and endorsement that is attached to our license, and we do that once, and then every five years, we have to fill 15 hours of professional development in this particular area, along with special education. So a total of 30 hours, 15 in educating English learners and 15 in educating special education students as part of our five-year license update and renewal. And finally, in terms of reporting, districts must expand their reporting to English learners and include preschool students in this discussion. So up until the fall of 2024, when these new policy changes are being implemented, we educated students kindergarten through grade six in Norfolk. Now, the Department of Education has made some updates. We're now mandated to educate preschool students that have been identified as an English learner. So the roles of our EL teachers are changing and they're expanding. I wanted to go through, so this new policy change is going to be implemented in the fall. There are four areas that I wanted to highlight. I'm going to talk a little bit tonight about terminology that I think is important for everyone to be aware of, how we identify students as English learners, and then specifically around our guidance with regard to educating English learners. I'm not going to talk so much about reclassification, because that has to do a lot with interpreting scores of testing that we're mandated to administer for students. So here are some key terms. The term that we use for students who are exposed to one or more languages, including world languages and heritage language, learners who, students who have dual language programs and students who have been identified as English learners and require some support in that area are called, it's a multilingual learner, okay? So MLs is kind of the acronym. English learners, EL. So it's ML is a general broad term, and EL for students who qualify for those services. It's also a reporting term. We are, that is part of the data that we submit to the state during our regular data submissions during the school year. So we have to report the number of students who receive EL services. There's another definition that's relevant to us in our current climate, and that's SLIF. And SLIF stands for Students with Limited or Interrupted Formal Education, and that's typically a result of, you know, war, civil unrest, migration and other factors. So you will hear the term SLIF at some point, and that just means that students have had limited education due to their home country and the origin of their home country, or they may have had interrupted education. So we also hear the term former English learner or FEL. And in Massachusetts, FEL stands for Former English Learner. It means student who was identified as an English learner, they received the English learner services, and they no longer qualify for the services, but they do, our EL teachers are obligated to monitor their progress for four years. So that's also part of their responsibility. So currently, in grades K through six, as we project into the fall, we have 23 multilingual learners allocated for entering into the district. That does not include students who are coming in through kindergarten screening, and that's happening tomorrow, Thursday and Friday, where some students will be identified. And we also have 22 FELs, okay? We currently have 1.5 teachers in total for the district. We have a .8 teacher, Mrs. Colleen Brightman, and we have a .7 teacher, Mrs. Sarah Myers. In addition, we have a 1.0 full-time instructional assistant that's shared across both schools. So how do we identify students as L learners? The first thing that we do is every time a student registers for public school, new students, kindergarten students that are coming in through kindergarten screening, those families are given a home language survey, and that is a survey that parents fill out. And they answer questions about whether or not there's a primary language used in their home, or whether there's a secondary language in their home with regard to their children. Okay, and I'm going to talk about this just a little bit. This is a little sample of the home language survey. This is something, the home language survey is actually disseminated by the Department of Education, and we're mandated to use the Department of Education's home language survey. We've been using it for years. This is actually part of the new policy change now that we use the Department of Education. We're a little ahead of the game on that, which is really good. But the home language survey actually is generated from the federal law. We have to use the questions that are provided by the Department of Education, and we are mandated to issue the survey in English, but also in, you know, a family's primary or preferred language. So this is kind of, I like this slide because it gives like a sequence of what happens when students enter the district. All students will be getting a home language survey, and then if they do indicate that they speak another language in the hall, we are obligated to screen those students. And parents are notified that their child will be screened. This is actually, step three is actually part of the new mandate that's coming in the fall. But we continue to do that. We do that as a general practice anyhow. But then, when the student is, the student is then screened by our L teachers, within 30 days, parents are notified of those results. And if their student qualifies for L services, parents are given the right to opt out of those services or opt in to those services. And then, again, we are required by the Department of Education to code students as L students through our SAMs reporting that happens several times a year. So this is what's changed a little bit, is we're entering into the fall, we've added preschool identification. So it is our obligation to administrate the home language survey to enrolling preschool students. We had preschool screening today, and we did that. So all home language surveys went home with preschool students as a part of our new mandate. There is a new screening tool that's coming out. It isn't quite here yet for our preschool students, but it's coming in the fall, okay? And if students in preschool are identified as requiring L services in preschool, they, we need to start providing those services. That's all, you know, preschool was never under the umbrella before this. Again, same mandate, we have to notify parents within 30 days if their child qualifies for the service. And all incoming kindergarten students who have a language other than English on their home language survey will also be screened using the WIDA screener, which is a tool that all districts use in the state of Massachusetts. And we've been using it for years, so our teachers are very fluent in administering this tool. Vicki and I prepared this presentation together. We thought it was important for us to have this slide up here, just to talk a little bit about SLIF students and how the law requires that our programs are, you know, designed to meet the needs of our students, and that SLIF students ages eight years or older and beyond, we are, you know, there to be coded a certain code for the Department of Education. So once a student's identified, been identified for, as an EL student and require services through the testing that we do, the WIDA screener, and the parents have opted in or opted out of the service, there's a range of, there's like a scoring range that's administered when students are, take the WIDA score. So typically, it's from one, scores one through six, with one being students who acquire the most amount of support and six being the least amount of support. But what we typically do is use the scores one through four, because typically when students score three or four, they're beginning to exit out of, you know, the need for services. So when students score a one or a two on the access test, which I haven't discussed yet, but that's a mid-year state exam like MCAS that's given to all students who are L students. And so if they score a one or two, we are guided to provide two to three instructional periods a day at 45 minutes of instruction per period. So that would be like two times 45 services a day or three times 45 services a day, delivered by a licensed ESL or EL teacher, okay? If they score three or four, we're guided to deliver one time a day for 45 minutes, one times 45 per service delivery. So those services can be provided in the classroom, or they can be provided in a pull-out setting with their EL teacher.
Can those be like with multiple kids at one time?
Yes, yeah, small group instruction typically. Great question, thank you. Again, we have, the district should create opportunities for Ls to be with their English-speaking peers during lunch recess, extracurricular activities such as physical education, music and art. And so we thought it was really important to put this slide up here, just so, you know, our community understands our obligations around educating students, you know, in an inclusive environment. Very similar to special education. And I had already mentioned this, but I think it's important for you to know as well that our EL teachers not only deliver instruction, but they're also obligated to monitor students' progress, whether they're a current L student or whether they receive L services within a four-year period. And so they're constantly like meeting with the classroom teachers to collect information about how students are performing on school-based assessments. You know, they observe students and, you know, they just really, you know, collect information. I know our teachers collect all like the end-of-year assessments. They look closely at students to make sure that they're, you know, progressing. And so, if you have any questions, those are just basically, you know, the overviews of our mandate and guidance around educating L students.
For preschool students?
We have preschool students in our district, but then preschool students in our district. If they qualify as L, does that make them eligible for services in our school, whether they attend or not? And are they part of the integrated preschool program now?
Yeah, 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 yeah. So sometimes, in the past, we have had some students enter the district we would consider to be like, you know, a level-one student or a newcomer, just even not English-speaking. And we have in the past supported, you know, those students in our preschool program. It hasn't happened often, but we've had a couple of students over the past probably three or four years where we have brought those students under our preschool umbrella because, because of our obligations to be registered.
I think that for as long, just as far as the requirement, it's all registered students that have to be screened.
So it wouldn't include children who are on the waitlist to work or come into district after?
Exactly, yes.
It's just registered.
So you have to be like accepted into the program first and then attending.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And then, just one more great point that, so we're talking about the terminology of SLIF for students that interrupt a schooling. So really, that only applies to students that are eight years, eight years or older, just because any student that hasn't been enough schooling that they missed, that they couldn't catch up naturally just by, so there's not much of a gap. But then obviously, the older district is, like when it's already reaching upper elementary, middle school, high school, that gap isn't much wide, but that really does not apply to really young kids.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we have Marion Goodman here with us. She provided the quarter rate card and her budget update for the school committee. Let's go ahead and listen to her. Just need a minute to switch.
So first thing I want to do is remind you that this is an estimate. We're still in June, there's 19 more days in this month. And I will also remind you that this is my first year in Norfolk, and having not gone through your total year-end process yet, I'm going to be as conservative as I can to tell you where we're at right now. But I do think that things will, will pan out in the next month and certainly can give a greater, a better update as that happens. So this is what your budget looks like at this point, a slide not unfamiliar to you. $15,86,615, the majority of it spent on instructional services, 83%. And I'm going to go through this relatively quickly, you're all very familiar with this format already. And again, happy to answer any questions as we go along. In terms of district administration, we're looking at a small deficit of $5,313 estimated for the end of the year. Those are, those are the high-level superintendent's office, business office, HR and legal services. In instructional services, which is again, as we just said, about 83% of your budget, we're looking at a small deficit as well, $31,560. And some of the reasons we've talked about throughout the course of the year are listed here. So, so I, and I'll go through the whole thing and then talk to you about what we think, where we think we'll end up overall. In terms of other student services, that would incorporate some of In terms of other student services, that would incorporate some of the things you've just heard about from Anna. The, the health and nursing services, transportation, food service, et cetera. The, that balance is looking at twenty thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars overspent. We looked at a need for additional HOD van this year due to enrollment in additional transportation services, the fund placements for teen decisions. Positive side, we go to operations and maintenance. We've had some staff turnover in this area. We've also had a budget freeze for essential spending. This is where the majority of your funds are available at this point and it supports the transfers that you see that I will look for a vote from you tonight. In terms of fixed charges, these are our contractual obligations to employees. Also, a small balance of eleven thousand, eighty-five dollars here. Most of our equipment is funded through our capital program, so there isn't enough money in the budget for equipment. And in terms of our nine-thousand series, as you're aware, that was, is anticipated at a negative hundred and twenty-six thousand due to the circuit breaker revolving account, which in the amount that was budgeted. This amount already includes the offset from circuit breaker funding in May. So, so this is a balance of one twenty-six, in the negative. So as a whole, we're looking at about a fifty-seven thousand, just under fifty-eight thousand dollar deficit, which is slightly over, you know, by point three-eight percent, a hundred point three-eight percent. And some of the ways that I think that we can offset some of these expenses, again, I'll remind you, we still have nineteen days left in this school year. We're waiting for some final payrolls to post. We have three payrolls that are left to post and, and they're, they're big and we have funding available for them. So we're waiting for them to finally post to see where this lands. We're waiting for some final invoices and some larger purchase orders. Just today, we've closed a couple of purchase orders and, and heard about some different other issues. So I can probably comfortably take ten thousand dollars off of that just from today. And then, other opportunities that we might have or might have to look at as the year progresses in the next nineteen days is to reclassify some expenses that may be allowable and applicable to either grant funds or revolving funds. And those would be within acceptable time periods for any of those grants and would support the way the grant is written if we had to do that. I'm hoping that, you know, once those final payrolls posted, we won't have any for not. But it's, it's one opportunity that we might be able to look at to cover that, that roughly fifty-eight thousand dollars. And I have given you a copy of our special ed revolving funds or special revenue funds. This is where your revolving funds are in terms of balances right now. We pretty much have about just under eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars in various revolving funds. And those funds, I'll remind you, are for those specific purposes. So you can't use food service money to offset, especially with costs, for example. It has to be for the food service program. So that's where these, these costs, where these balances are at this point in time. And in terms of our grant funding, again, the grants are written specifically for specific purposes. And here are the balances that are there, that are identified by grant. You can see that our FY twenty-three grants are all closed out. Some of our FY twenty-four grants still have some money. We can carry forward those grants for up to twenty-seven months. I don't anticipate we will. We've already gone through twelve of those months. And so you have about a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars there. And then just to recap on your special ed circuit breaker and stabilization funds, your circuit breaker funding has been applied. A hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars is already accounted for. And the two hundred and fifty thousand on this bed stabilization fund, as you know, is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of it. It will be used to offset the FY twenty-five budget based on the, the vote that this committee took as well as the select board. Summary of the gift accounts is, balance anticipated at this point is just about forty thousand dollars. And, and you can see what those donations are used for. So we're asking, I haven't answered any questions on this. Asking for a transfer of a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars from the maintenance category and eleven thousand from the benefits category to offset the tuition costs that are in a deficit at this point in time. And, and if you have any questions, I will take on it. Questions I looked at this?
I'm looking for a motion to transfer a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars from maintenance and eleven thousand dollars for benefits to offset tuition costs.
So moved. Any discussion? All of us agree. I. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks. So great. Right, next on the agenda is Grade One and Calvin. A little transition here. Sorry. So earlier this week on Monday, we had a meeting of the budget subcommittee. And at that time, I shared with the budget subcommittee that our current enrollment for grade one entering twenty twenty-four is at a hundred and sixty-eight students. We were planning for eight sessions of first grade, which would have class sizes of twenty-one. That's at the upper end of our class size policy. As the budget subcommittee in the full committee knows, this was a really difficult budget year where we had to actually eliminate some positions and reduce some, some hours and some staffing. In a typical school year, we would probably monitor that over the summer. And if we had additional enrollment, make them forward to committee and recommend adding an additional staff member. Typically, we do pick up between five and seven new first graders over the course of the summer. In the past, in some years, we've had kindergarten enrollment exceed the maximum class size. We came to the committee and recommended that we lift the cap for a year and we added paraprofessional staff members to support, keep those learning rates as well in the classrooms. Given the current situation that the district is facing and the potential of new students coming in, I recommend to the budget subcommittee that we add an additional first-grade classroom and lower the class sizes across the board in all of those classes in anticipation of Norfolk enrollment coming in over the course of the summer and keeping those under the class size limit. The funding source for that, we had talked about at the last meeting, that we are anticipating, based on the projected state budget, an increase to chapter seven funding. We've already talked with the select board at a couple of public meetings about that funding being reallocated to schools. We are anticipating with the current proposals that that would generate approximately seventy thousand dollars in revenue, which would offset the cost of an additional teacher. We had hoped to potentially use some of that funding to offset the cost of ELA adoption. At the last school committee meeting, you did vote to give the district the option to pay that bill over two years. So we do have that as a backup option. And we also would be recommending coming forward a capital request at the fall term meeting to fund the ELA program. The budget subcommittee was in support of that recommendation. So we're bringing to the full committee tonight the request to approve the hiring of an additional first-grade teacher to lower class sizes in our first grades in anticipation of new students living in Norfolk entering and keep those class sizes up over a month. Lauren, did I miss anything? Or do you want to add anything to that?
No, I think that pretty much summed it up. Again, our options were between, you know, adding a ninth classroom or temporarily increasing the class sizes. And I think keeping the class sizes, especially with the unknowns over the summer, is really the vital part of this.
So adding the classroom, that would mean the R room was gone, right?
No, no.
Okay.
So last year, we were able to have a music room because we had a reduction in, in the number of classes we had for one year. So in order to add a first-grade music room, it will return to being traveling.
Okay.
Music will be on the cards as it was the year prior. And the music teacher has already, we've already spoken with the music teacher and he has adapted the curriculum prior because he's been a traveling music teacher in the past. So that would be the space that would be dedicated for the additional first grade.
I think once we do that and look out, like elsewhere for more space, if there's really no classroom setting to, to utilize more space, I think that's pretty much it.
I have a question, but should we have a motion first or is it okay to keep discussing?
Probably want to have a motion to, a vote to add the additional first-grade classroom.
Okay, I have a motion to add an additional first-grade classroom.
So moved.
Second. How many kindergarten classes are there this year? Not the coming year, but how many are there this year?
We have seven. Going into, no, we have eight. I'm sorry. We have eight going into first grade.
Okay, because I thought I had heard somewhere that we had a kindergarten teacher moving up to first.
We do.
We do.
Because we only have seven entering kindergartens.
Okay, so we have seven classes.
So we have eight current classes. We're projecting seven kindergartens next year. So one teacher is moving up to first grade.
Which would make it eight, and then this is a new one to make it nine.
Nine, yeah. And that's just reflective of overall growth in town.
Yeah.
Because this is based down in Norfolk. And we will, it'll be the first time in a long time. We've had nine classrooms. But by adding the additional first grade, we'll be looking at class sizes of eighteen and eighteen.
Which is way better.
They're not small. They're, but better than, better than twenty-one or twenty-two to start, yes.
Or twenty-three.
All those in favor?
I.
We don't, no, I mean, obviously, sorry, I just have a question. So like, what if we get a lot more growth for kinder, I mean, what, have we thought through the options? If we need to add an eighth kindergarten?
Yeah, we have. So I can talk about that when we talk about the emergency shelter site if you want, because there's some overlap there. All right, next we have the Norfolk's CPAC. As you know, one of their biggest fundraisers every year is the trunk retreat that is held in October. Per policy, the Norfolk school committee has to vote to approve fundraisers. So they are requesting that the school committee review and vote to approve the annual trunk retreat. It would be scheduled for October twenty, October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, as always in the rear parking lot of the H L D school. So.
And I have a motion to approve the CPAC trunk retreat on October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty.
Second. Any discussion?
No, but I guess maybe we can question. So do we typically, I'm trying to remember, how, how most of these come forward together in the fall?
We do, but what happens is we usually look at those in the October meeting and it doesn't give them a lot of time to advertise their event.
I thought I remembered. I just need to make sure.
Yeah, they like to try to advertise early and, and start planning early, so.
You need to plan to get those trunks.
Yes.
All those in favor?
I. Next on the agenda is an update on the Bay State Emergency Overflow Shelter. At our last school committee meeting, I gave a fairly comprehensive overview of what we know so far. I think, you know, I can recap a little bit of that. As you were aware, we were notified by the state that the state had selected the Bay State site as their emergency overflow shelter at about five-thirty, half an hour before it was released to the public. So we learned about it along with the public. Since that time, we have had a couple of planning meetings. The first meeting was really just to give us some general global information. And that has been shared out in multiple forms. So that, the information we received from the first meeting was that we're anticipating about a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty families. That they expect the families to be primarily newcomer families as well as current Massachusetts unsheltered families. They have told us that the site will not be housing families with significant medical needs because of its location. And they had also shared at that time that the projected opening date was sometime in the middle of June. So that's the information that we got from the first meeting. Since that time, we've had one other planning meeting. And at that planning meeting, we did have the superintendents from both myself from Norfolk and Ms. Trelle from the middle school, as well as our school committee chairs and representatives from the town, Victoria Saldana, our assistant curriculum director. So that, we, we had that second meeting. I think a couple of things that I want, want to share. I do think that it's important for all of us to recognize the selection of the Bay State sites and the plans for this emergency shelter are brand-new to a really small community. There are a lot of worries, a lot of concerns, a lot of questions.
I think people might be having a hard time hearing you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I can try to be louder.
I didn't know if we needed to move the microphone because I know everything is pretty.
I don't know if the microphone helps my volume. I think it helps the.
I apologize.
So it is brand-new. This is a small town, a small community. I think people are very concerned, have a lot of worries and a lot of questions that are absolutely fair, legitimate and important. I think the other thing is, the information is slow to come and we recognize that. We have concerns as well. We have been very strongly communicating and sharing. Our primary concern, as you've heard echoed today, is space. We have limited space at the H L day. We've been struggling with that for many years. We've been in four rounds of negotiations and attempted applications to the Mass Building Authority for a building expansion project. So we do have some significant concerns around space that we have shared with the Department of Education as well as the state. As well as funding and resources, which I think we should talk about earlier today. We have had, shared all of those concerns. We've shared our projected enrollment. We've shared building maps. We've shared all of the potential solutions that we might have. And we are working with the state and, and they are exploring options in ways that they can support us. We do not have final information yet. As we get it, we are trying to be very transparent, send things out. We've sent a couple of update letters out to the community. As soon as we have information, we're trying to share that with the public. One of the questions that has come up that I can address tonight is, I know there are many people that are concerned about modulators. We've talked about, we are in a building study right now looking at potential modular expansion options for just the Norfolk students because the enrollment continues to grow and it's projected to continue to grow over the next ten years. So there has been talk about that as part of a permanent building solution. We are not at this time and do not anticipate considering at any point modular solutions for students. We are not looking at, even with incoming students, putting any of our current students in modulators. That is an option that we are exploring. We are exploring other possible strategies with the state to create additional instructional space. We are looking at potential solutions for moving offices and moving other, storage, other things out of the H L day. We are talking about our special education offices, our storage records rooms, and trying to look at ways that we could potentially relocate those with modular options, but not housing students. The state has been very, actually, I would say DESI is who we've really been working with, are actively looking into ways that they potentially support that for us. But we don't have final information to share yet, but I do want to be clear that we are not considering modular spaces as learning environments for students at this time. I think it's a little confusing because we are looking at that as, as the building committee for long-term, to address our long-term growth needs. We have also had a preliminary conversation with the Department of Education around our potential models for providing services. Again, we do not yet know the population, who's coming in. We have, we do anticipate there will be some students coming in that are English-language learners. And as Dr. Tupper shared tonight, you have some requirements in terms of how we provide educational services to those students. We were looking at the possibility of having a newcomer classroom in each building where students would enter the district, spend time in the newcomer classroom, where we could do preliminary assessments, academic assessments, as well as language screening to determine what individual students' needs are, to orient them to the district and to the sort of culture of, of the school. And then students would be integrated for parts of their day into, into the general education classroom. And depending on their language needs, if they're, as Anna talked about, if they're level-one English learners, they'll have to come out of the classroom for portions of their day back to those, you know, homeroom classrooms to receive English-language learner instruction. And that's based on their level and the amount of time is governed by the state regulations. We are going to be shifting this slightly based on the research and the data that most of the students that are coming in, especially at the under-grade levels, as Vicky said, if they are SLICE students who have missed periods of education at the younger grade levels, that isn't considered to be disruptive learning if they're under eight. And the research is showing that kids learn best by being immersed in languages, in classrooms that are speaking the target language. So we are looking at hiring support, additional paraprofessional staff that would join students and involve. and involve them into the classrooms to provide additional individualized assistance. I think it's important, again, to communicate, our goal is to develop, is to develop a very strong, comprehensive, robust plan that provides for all of our students' needs. So when we're talking about providing additional support for English language learners or paraprofessional staff to support students that are newcomers, it is to keep the overall teacher-to-student ratio low within the classroom so that we can continue to provide the individual, a small group, learning instruction that we, that we have always provided for all of the kids. So we are looking at that. We are advertising currently for new, two English language learner teachers that would staff these bridge classrooms. Again, after our conversations with DESI, they are looking to, they are, based on the research here, that it's in the best interest of all kids that they, that they are expedited and, and transitioned into the general education setting as quickly as possible so that they can be immersed, again, in the English language learning, a robust English environment, as well as that academic content instruction. So those will, that is how, they'll shift to be more like a bridge classroom. In order to prevent the, the significant disruption that students transitioning every forty-five to sixty days, and I think it's important to state that too upfront, that that's an average. So some of our students might be here for six months. In talking with other superintendents, that's often the case. You might have families here for a shorter period of time. You might have students that are here six months or longer than that. I have talked with Rich Trelle, who is the superintendent of the middle and high school. They have about thirty students this year that are housed in temporary shelters at K P. And one of the recommendations that he had that I think we are going to move forward with is we will only bring students in on Monday, on, on the first day of the week. So if students arrive at the shelter on Tuesday or Wednesday, they will remain out of school for a week so that we can register, we can plan for that. And then we can have our new teachers spend Mondays in their separate space to be able to support newcomers and, and that adjustment bridge period. Another thing that we've had some questions around have been how we are preparing our current students. Vicki, do you want to talk a little bit about lessons that we're possibly developing?
Absolutely. So, so part of our S C L program has always been about building welcoming community, and that's something that we kind of focus on throughout the year in different themes. So we put forth two lessons, just to kind of wrap up the year. One, that is for key grades one and two, and the other one is for grades three through six. And basically, it's a very simple lesson. They, they basically kind of reinforce everything that has been taught this whole year about creating and accepting and respecting the school community. The younger grades have a feed aloud that they actually start the year with, but we thought it'd be a great way to kind of end the year with as well. It's called "All Are Welcome." And it basically just focuses on how do we create a welcoming environment, what it's like to be new to school, you know? The, the ones that are for grades, and students have an opportunity to kind of read the book, listen to the book, and just have some, just have some discussion around like how, how we as a community create, like I said, like a welcoming environment. And talking about like all different types of families that, that come to us. And so it's actually a really, really lovely book that is, it's a H R D favorite. At Freeman Kennedy, the focus is not only on welcoming new students, but also kind of revisiting themes that they've learned in social studies or on immigration. So, and basically, it really focuses on appreciating diversity among peers and immigration all over the world. And they have a poem, a story that they read about a student named Julia who moved to the United States. And they kind of discuss about how did it feel when you first came into school, you know what I mean? And, and kind of the theme, again, just a little bit older around how do we welcome students? How do we create that environment, you know, for, for that where everybody feels welcome? So this was shared with our staff members this week. And like I said, it's really just, we thought it was a great way to kind of wrap up the school year and kind of reinforce all the themes and topics that we've just, we've discussed over the years.
In addition to that, I think Lauren, you had asked at our last meeting how we will also prepare students for students leaving. That they, you know, my welcoming classmate gets attached, and, and then the student has to leave. So we will be developing some additional lessons to help students understand, you know, how does this is structured that some families might be here for a short term while they're adjusting and looking for other housing. So we do plan to develop some additional lessons around that to help our students understand and being prepared for that. Other information, oh, we are working on planning a community forum. We are, as I said, we have been really pushing the state to support and collaborate with us on potential ways to address the space demands. And so as we are getting additional information, they are exploring several different options. As we have additional information, we will be, hope to be prepared to share that at the next forum. So we are looking at probably the end of June. I will be meeting with Rich Trelle on Friday to further discuss that. I think we'll probably put out some sort of a document for, for people if they have specific questions that they want us to address so that they can get their questions to us in advance, and then we can be prepared to present on those and then have question and answer at the end. So we will be doing that. Another thing that we are planning to do, because again, this is a huge change. There's a lot of valid concern and worries, and, and we don't have all the information. We, we're, we're sharing everything we know, so there are things that we don't know yet. But because of that, we really want to make sure that we are updating the community throughout the summer. We are going to put out a newsletter tomorrow, our Wednesday's words, and we plan to continue to issue the monthly newsletters throughout the summer. And we'll include in those any updates and information that we have as we have that. The Department of Ed has also informed us that they, for any districts receiving students that are non-English speakers, that they will fund and provide all the translation services. So they have an agency that they have identified that has been providing those services. That was another concern we had around costs, because translating documents and handbooks can be expensive. So the state is going to manage those costs in the end and provide the vendor to do all the translation. Other things, again, there's, there's quite a bit that we don't know. We hope to have another planning meeting soon. We will have, our, our school committee chair, Lisa, has offered to be part of those meetings, present at that meeting, as well as members from the town. And hopefully, we will have additional information that we get from these meetings. We did also apply, the state extended or reopened a grant that had closed for McKinney-Bentley, which is homeless education. And we did apply for, I think it was posted ninety-five thousand.
Hundred thousand.
We went round, hundred thousand. So we applied for a hundred thousand.
It took the maximum.
And that is funding to front the planning efforts this, this summer so that we can bring, and we've had a huge response from our teachers and staff. We're looking to put together a, a planning committee, and we wanted representatives from special education, from our general teaching staff, from our math and reading support, so that we could develop a plan. And again, when we're talking about plans, we're talking about planning for students coming in, but we are talking about maintaining strong, excellent education programs for all students. So we have to think about some of the additional funding we are receiving might be for additional math and reading instruction, for other support, so that we can keep programs strong and, and flowing the way that they currently do. Throughout the year, we have a lot of metrics that we use to monitor student progress. I think you probably remember the LinkedIn report, it was just in January, the benchmarks and baselines. So M-CAS data is only one way that we measure the effectiveness of the, of our school system. We look at student attendance data, we look at student discipline data. We look at, we have unit assessments for every math and literacy unit. We have district benchmarks that we do in addition in fall, winter, and spring. We have multiple years of trend data so that we can, and I always report to the committee on how our students are doing compared to performance in prior years. Those reports are online on our website, so they're very publicly available. We'll continue to monitor things with those. Again, I think, I think that my wish would be that, that the community going forward is, is divided. There's a lot of fear, there's a lot of questions. I think we have to appreciate that everybody has different viewpoints and that people are, are concerned about their children as well, as supporting new families coming in. And we want to make sure that everybody gets the information they need and has the chance to ask the questions that they have so that we are all working collaboratively on the best possible solution. So I will continue to update the school committee. If anyone has questions that I can answer, I'm happy to answer them. Again, there's some things that we don't, don't know as of yet.
Can I ask a clarifying question? I think you answered it. I just want to make sure I understood.
Yeah.
So you said two new L teachers, one H R D, one Freeman?
Yes, that would staff a bridge classroom.
That would staff the bridge classroom. And then you mentioned the para-professionals. That's in addition to those L teachers, correct?
Yes, yes. It's in addition to those L teachers. And again, I do believe at this point, there's significant state revenue that we will be receiving that will fund those teachers. And what we will be doing over the summer, as we know more about the population coming in, will be deciding what other positions might we need based on the population we're serving and the needs of our current students. So right now, we're advertising for the L teachers. We will be looking for para-professionals. Hopefully, para-professionals that might be multilingual that can also support that. But we may be looking for additional support for mental health staff. We may be looking for additional support for math development, for math and reading, or our math, I shouldn't say that. Math and reading specialists and coaches. So we're really going to be looking at the needs of all students, what we know about the population coming in, what's the best use of those funds to keep our programs strong.
Right. And so those para-professionals that will be going into the classrooms with potential multilingual learners? That's to make sure that the teacher and the staff that would be in there anyway?
It's to keep the teacher-student ratio low.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely. So I think that we have had questions about class size. Yes, if we are bringing, I mean, the state is sharing at this point, based on other large sites like this, they are seeing a yield of less than one student per family. There are, in each center, some families are coming in with no children. Some are coming in with the children that are not school age eligible. I think at the last meeting, I shared with the committee, our preschool is full. We have a waitlist of sixty families. Newcomers will not displace people on the current waitlist. They'd be added to the end. So we are not going to be bringing in any families or any students from the shelter into our preschool programs. Families with children under that age or under the age of five will not be entering. So the average that they have, which is all the data that we give us at this point, is, is less than one student per family. But with one hundred and forty families, that could be a hundred students, it could be a hundred and ten. Again, some of those students in other districts would be entering preschool, but we are not taking students prior to the, to kindergarten age. That should reduce the number a little bit. Some will be going to the middle school and high school. But yes, if you have ten students entering a grade level, you now have nine first grades. So yes, the class size will go up slightly, but we are anticipating bringing in additional staff, staff, as we have in the past, when we have higher enrollment, to keep the teacher-student ratios low and, and be able to continue to provide our small group. All of our instruction, guided reading, literacy, math, is based on small group instruction, and we have good, good ratios currently.
I just wanted to add two just for clarification. So like, as you saw from the presentation, we already have over forty students that are English language learners in the district. So we already have the program set up to meet this. And actually, when we met with the state, we don't, usually if we have a programmatic change, like Dr. Tupper talked about, like we are right, regulated very closely. We don't have to, our, because our program is not changing, we don't have to submit even a program evaluation, which if there was a big shift in our programming for L students, we would have to do that for the state to approve. But because we already have this in place, what we are doing is basically keeping a program that we already have in place. Where our L teachers are already working with our current classroom teachers that are already supporting students that are L students, who are also, we have had quite a few students that, a couple that came in that are, were newcomers too this year, you know what I mean? And so we're just increasing the staff, so we'll be able to offer the same programmatic, the same level of support for our staff too. And again, we're talking about students that are coming with, as she kind of talked about leveling, with little English proficiency. But there are students who are hearing that come, that are actually have.
Trilingual.
Trilingual and have strong language proficiency. So, so they, they might not even need access to this particular program. So that's why I think what we're trying to do is, we're waiting, like I said, once we kind of know who the population is that is coming to us, we're going to be able to make a lot more specific plans, because then we'll know what do we need to put in place in order to respond appropriately. Not only, like we said, that'll be to the population that's coming in, but for our current kiddos too. And that is always our priority, is to make sure that we're meeting everything the kids needs, like this is why we're here, you know? So, and I think that once we get that information, which we're all eagerly anticipating as well, I think we'll be able to really offer you a lot more. And like, I think we've always been very transparent, because we want the partnership. We want people to feel confident to sell, to send your kids to our school system. That's a huge priority for us, so.
That's, that's all.
And I think just expanding on what Vicki said too. Because the population of students that are English language in Norfolk is the largest growing population that we've had in terms of our demographics. So when I started in two thousand thirteen, we didn't have any English language learners. We currently have forty. So all of our teachers also have to, have had to get training from the Department of Ed and sheltered English immersion. So they all have sheltered English immersion endorsements and have to fulfill that as a real license requirement too. So the majority of our teachers at this point have experience working with students that are not English speaking. And I think at our August meeting, we will have some of our classroom teachers, as well as our L teachers here, to talk a little bit about what that looks like, not just, again, to meet the needs of our current students, but also how they also address that and support the students in the classrooms in those situations. Again, happy to take any questions. There is a lot of things that we're still working through. You know, I know it is frustrating, and I certainly understand that. It's somewhat frustrating for all of us as we're trying to plan. But I do think the, that, that the state and the DESI have heard the concerns a lot in here, and they are working on solutions. So hopefully, in our next year, we will have that information.
What, what type of poll does DESI have in regards to like, when we voice our concerns to them, are they able to relay that to the decision-makers at the, at the state that can actually change?
Absolutely. They have been sharing, and they're very clear. And again, the biggest concerns we have are around space and resources. And they are very well aware of that, and they are actively looking at that. I know that there were some things brought up at the town forum too that they're also looking at. You know, water, other, other kind of questions that people had that they are actively exploring. But yes, the advocacy has certainly been there, and, you know, we're here to make sure that we are providing strong education for all kids. I have been talking about this space crunch at the H L D everywhere for the last ten years. And so we were very, very clear with the state on that, and they definitely heard us, and they are actively looking at, at potential ways to support that.
Yeah, just going off of that, I think you mentioned something about like, all the different staffing that we're looking at hiring. Have we kind of talked to other districts that have brought in this, like, maybe not even just this volume of like, and some of the difficulties or challenges that they've had in the additional staff? Because one of the things I see is that potentially, like, as the presentation mentioned, kids who have had disruptive learning because, you know, they're fleeing from countries that might not have had some sort of stabilized education system, and you put them into a classroom for seven hours a day. Are there going to be kind of that support system that can help with that? Because I can't imagine, you know, even kids coming into kindergarten have a hard time kind of like adjusting to that type of schedule. So.
So we have talked to several other districts that have gone through this process, and we have been getting recommendations and thoughts in terms of staffing. You know, as I shared for Jen Carson in Plainville on the task force, and they have had quite a few students come in this year. She's had some really great insight. They haven't had significant concerns around students having behavioral challenges or things like that. They really haven't seen that. And actually, many of the students that they have, had come in have adjusted very, very quickly and have made some really strong progress. So I think, you know, what I would say is that when we are planning educational classrooms, we really work hard to try to make sure all of our classrooms are balanced, that they are appropriately staffed, that they have multiple resources. We have students in Norfolk that may come in and may be going through a traumatic experience in their life or have unique learning needs. We, as an educational team, we, we talk about that since we, we make programmatic changes. Sometimes students need to have breaks in their day or might need some time outside of the classroom for. or might need some time outside of the classroom for some instruction. So we certainly are used to that. And if we have students come in from the shelter or from anywhere that were struggling to be in a classroom for seven hours a day, the team would convene and we would develop a plan that best meets that child's needs and protects the needs and learning of everyone in the classroom. So that, we would follow the same process for that.
I think what, like you mentioned, that the community, there's a lot of fear. Obviously, fear of the unknown, what's going to happen. You know, I do hope the community sees it. Like I know we see it, how much you guys are fighting for us and working, and I feel like it's a lot of time. I did talk to Representative Vaughn earlier today, and he's trying to find ways that he can, you know, advocate for additional funding or additional resources. I hope something maybe that has been discussed with the state is also funding an additional admin that can help with a lot of this, because I do see that, you know, it's probably pulling a lot of your time or some sort of liaison that, over the extent in which the shelter is here, can help work with that, because there's just so much back and forth that you guys are probably gonna have to do, or, you know.
Yeah, there's a lot. One of the things that we've talked about, and again, I'm working very closely with Rich, Rich, because we're really a K-12 system here, you know? And we want continuity there. One of the things that Plainville put in place, and Rich and I have been talking about, we've written to, we've written a grant to try to secure additional funding for, is the possibility of a family school liaison that would support registration and onboarding kids, making sure that we have appropriate records, all of those kinds of things. So that is something that we are considering. Again, we are, we've applied for this startup grant for a hundred thousand. We have a guarantee of a hundred and four dollars per day per student. That's based on the fact that the average per pupil spending is eighteen thousand and change. So it's based on that. So if you think about that, then you have ten, if you have ten students from the shelter all year, even though those students might change this, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, that funds quite a few positions. And then in addition to that, there is a thousand dollar a day per student fund that we can apply for, for additional curriculum materials and costs. So we'll be applying for that. And we're actively looking at other grants, as we always do. So I think it's great for people to advocate for funding. I know Representative Vaughn did, and I know the committee agreed to, to make him send out that letter. That is one of our biggest concerns outside of space, is that that funding remains stable and allows us to do what we need to do.
Yeah, and going off on that, that funding, one of my fears kind of looking ahead also is, you know, with the state funding a hundred and four dollars per child per day, it's my understanding that if the child is enrolled here by October first, and they do filter over to the next year, that that funding is gone. Well, it's not gone, it's about, it's cut by about, you get, instead of about twenty thousand dollars a year, you get about forty-five hundred.
Yes.
So I mean, that, if a decent amount of these newcomer children were to roll over to the next year and be here, we could be looking at a very serious issue coming into the next year. And I think everybody needs to be, I know you guys are aware of this, but I'm kind of projecting this out to the community, because they might not fully understand this. But there's a lot of fear of that, is-
There's a lot of advocacy going on around that.
So let me just clarify that. So what the state has said is that, you have a hundred and four dollars a day for, per day, per student, and that is in supplemental budget that's funded through December. They are planning to continue that, but it's under discussion what that looks like. So we wanna advocate as much as we can to continue the funding at the rate that it is. So that's part of it. What the state is saying is that after, if students are here prior to October one, they are included in the chapter seventy allocation. So and as you know, chapter seventy funds, fund about twenty-five percent of our budget. So it would be about twenty-five percent, which is like forty-five, four thousand, I would say. The one thing that is a little different for us, because this is a shelter that's going to have students coming in and exiting, we are gonna receive the majority of our students after October one. So it would carry through next year. The students that are here in September will likely be gone by October. So we will get that allocation, because most of our, our large number of the students will be entering after. If there's students that are here prior to October one, it's unlikely they'll be here for the following year, because it's an overflow shelter. But that is a serious concern, and it is a bigger concern for districts where kids are placed in hotels that are, that are multiple, staying for multiple years. But that's an area for advocacy, and it's the funding that we need.
Can I just ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
On the funding. So there's the one thousand D E C grant, and then a hundred and four per day. The one thousand D E C grant, that can only be used for supplemental material.
No, that would be applied for other things, yeah. But it is upfront funding versus reimbursement.
And is that the same for the one and four per day? It's not, there's no limits to what you can use it for?
It would need to be for-
They said we can pull, even pull some of the funding, like if we decide to, so they, to pick a lump sum if we needed for something. So there seems to be a lot of-
There's a lot of flexibility. And the grant that we wrote today was for, or not today, the grant that we wrote a couple of weeks ago, that we will hear the first week of July, was to fund the camp that we talked about, bringing kids in to our orientation camp, as well as the potential part of a family liaison salary, as well as some additional staffing. So you know, we're pursuing all the funding sources that we can find to be sure that we have the resources, again, to protect educational records.
That just sparked something. So the camp, I forgot about that, I think it's great. But as we're going forward, because there will be turnover, are we thinking about some sort of like orientation pack? If you arise upon a Tuesday, you're not gonna be until Monday. I mean, I think it's for the benefit of the children coming in, as well as the students who are currently in classrooms that are going to be receiving, to make sure that everybody knows what they need to know.
We wanna make sure too, that students that are coming in, part of the week is, we wanna make sure they're gonna stay at the shelter before we bring them in. So they'll be in for a week and get settled before we-
But maybe this liaison could help them like with some things you need to know.
Absolutely, that's part of the family outreach.
How we-
Yeah.
How we behave at school and all of that, so.
We'll have, that's part of the family outreach. And again, when kids come in, they'll start in the bridge classroom. So with the Monday, or it's Monday holiday, it'll be Tuesday, but the first day of the week. So they'll have a piece of that, that's probably similar to the summer camp part on those first day days.
How long do you, go ahead. How long do you see the bridge period being?
It's not long, a few days. And again, it's gonna really depend on the needs of the individual child, and it's gonna depend, some of our kids that are in the shelter, students that are unsheltered, Massachusetts students might have been in another public school, they may go directly to the classroom. The bridge classrooms are really for English language learners that we receive, and it will really depend. But the intent, especially at the lower grades, is for kids to be integrated as quickly as possible into the general curriculum, so that they are getting English language arts, math, all competent area instruction. That said, if they are a level one English learner, they're going to have to come out for significant periods of the day for the directed English instruction. So even though they might be integrated quickly, it will not be for all day, because they have unique needs that need to be addressed in a separate setting, so.
I've also heard that like, E L teachers are very few and far to come by.
Correct.
We'd hire two, potentially more. I don't know what like the teacher-to-student ratio with that is. But let's say we have a hundred and thirty new kids that need to be serviced by this, now maybe we need three or four, where are we gonna find them?
Well, we have one point, we have one point five now that are working with forty students.
That's why I don't know the student-to-teacher ratio for that position.
Yep, so we have one point five now that are serving forty students. So I think two is our anticipated need. We might have to shift that depending, because again, not all of these kids are going to be English learners. But that's what we're advocating. But that is an area that I've advocated also for the state, where we're gonna need support is in recruitment and hiring. I mean, L teachers, we were very successful in our last search. We found great candidates. It can be a hard-to-fill position, so we have shared that. We are also hoping to hire some families that are bilingual for our, or hire some staffers that are bilingual for our para-professional positions. So we have also shared that with the state, and they have been sending some information of local agencies that we might be able to look to, to support that hiring. But I agree, that's gonna be a challenge for us.
Maybe, maybe you can speak to a little bit more about like, the push or kind of the conversations with the state? Because I feel like a lot of these plans, like when we discuss them, they sound really good in theory. And when we're talking about like maybe ten, twenty kids, and I'm like, oh, this can work. Like we mentioned, the behavioral things, like we have a process for that. And it's, I know it works, and it works for like the small scale that we're typical. And if we throw maybe, you know, ten, twenty more kids into the mix, it can work as well. But like, I just keep going back to like, the volume. If we're really talking about like some of the other communities who have received, like I said, fifteen to twenty, I'm like, this could be really good for everyone. Like our kids could learn a lot. You know, these could, these children could learn a lot from our kids. But it's just like, it's almost unfathomable that we could be bringing in, you know, a hundred and thirty, potentially more children.
We just don't know.
No, no, I know that, but I'm trying to think, like, not to say worst-case scenario, but like, we have to think of all kind of the pieces and-
We do. And I think to think, again, as you said, we don't know the number yet. We don't know the breakdown by grade. If you, but we do have nine, nine classrooms in first grade and eight or seven in the other grade. So depending on how that distributes, it could be a small number of kids per class.
And I guess my question is like, what kind of conversation with the state has been? I know it's been around a lot of spacing, but like, will they be strategic in terms of which families they choose and say, what if they choose, what if they choose all families who have first graders? And now we have twenty first grade classrooms.
We've shared that, we've advocated, I don't have a response to that.
No, no, I know, I'm more just kind of voicing these concerns that I've heard, because I think somebody had a great comment in regards to like, you know, making it very clear and almost putting your foot down and drawing a line. It's like, we need to prioritize families into the shelter who do not have school-aged children. And maybe, you know, cap that as a percentage of, you know, because-
They have not said that they will cap. We have shared that concern. What I would say is, you know, the more students that we receive, the addition, the more funding we have and the additional staffing that we will need.
No, I know, but it, as you know, it doesn't all come down to numbers, and especially for the following years, so.
I think like what, so I was just looking at their presentation from last week, and one thing they did share is that there were, they disappointed their site provider, which is heading home. And I think that once the space is open, the site provider is there, like we're gonna have a lot more information. And I think it's really hard to kind of talk in theory, like what staffing we might need. You know what I mean? And like, we, and like, again, like, we just, I think like what we're trying to really emphasize that every opportunity we had to talk to D E C or anybody from the state, we definitely shared very clearly, like that, here's what challenges we have. Like this is our space, like we're taking music out of the car, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And they, like, so that message has definitely been delivered, like every opportunity we get, you know? But I think that that's one of the things we wanted to kind of hold off, that once we have the numbers, we'll know like, do we need additional health teachers? Do we need more math support? Do we need more feeding support? I mean, I think those are the determinations we'll be able to make with more certainty. Like once we just, kind of just have more information.
Yeah, and this is not me questioning, like, it's more like voicing concerns from the community so that they can hear this, because you know, this is kind of their point of contact to hear this. But that, I guess that comes into another reason why we should be advocating maybe to allocate some of these funds to an additional support staff in the admin system. Because like, the state's not giving us any time to make these decisions. So, you know, it's almost purposeful that they're not giving anybody time to make these decisions, which makes it more difficult, which means you have, you know, like other decisions and things. Like, I know you guys are very busy, you're, you know, so.
There is a lot, and I do appreciate that. Part of that is why we wanted a committee, and why we've been asking staff and advertising. We are stipending people through the grant for that, because this is a team effort. We need to make sure, the more heads at the table, the better our solutions are gonna be.
Yeah.
Teachers have a different lens, they break through the table, special educators, you know, our clerical staff. And so we aren't planning this alone, it will be with a broader community.
We have a nice team, we have a great department.
But you're absolutely right, we are gonna need additional support. And as soon as we have the provider on site, we will set up a meeting too, to find out exactly what things that they're going to provide, what their plans are. They will be the ones that can answer some of the questions that the community has around vaccination planning. That they're responsible for that, so we will have more information to bring forward, unless they're on. And I think, Lauren, I would just say, the questions are great.
I know you guys don't have a lot of information, I just want like-
No, but I think the more questions and the more things we can share, the better we all are.
Yeah.
So-
But I also want letting everybody to know that you guys don't have the answers and aren't withholding. Not that you would ever withhold them, but it's like, you know, there's a lot of fear based on, like everybody's kind of navigating in the dark and worried.
It's not, it's a huge change, so.
One of, one thing that I obviously don't fully understand the legality of this thing, it's just, it comes from nowhere, of not wanting the children to integrate here. It's more from the trans, like how fluid the situation is and instability that, you know, in and out, in and out. Has there been an opportunity? I know we kind of talked about, or the question was posed about holding an educational like classroom there, which can't happen, and I understand, but if it was proposed as an optional thing? Like that's a family's-
It's a federal law that we cannot do that.
Even if the families opt into it?
Yeah, we can't do it, it's against, yeah, it's against-
No, no, I know, I just look at what I just said.
And it's also the federal, the Kenny Mitchell law requires that students who are homeless be immediately allowed to enter into the public school system in which they reside. And the, we can't provide a program that would be equivalent in the segregated, separate setting, so.
I know, I know.
We even have regulations around, as Anna shared today, about how we provide L programming, and what parents can and can't opt for there, so.
Oh, okay. Even, I'm just trying to put myself, I mean, I could never put myself in their position, but if I were to like move countries, you know, with my children and be placed somewhere where I know it's transitory in nature, I'm only gonna be there several weeks. It's like, I would probably want my child close by and not send them away. And I was thinking, a lot of, you know, parents might opt into that just because they would be there for a short period of time. You know, obviously, if they're here permanently, you know, get them in as quickly as possible. I'm just trying to think of all different things. Want to assist them, like if that's something that they feel it is better to have their kids close and comfortable. But if-
I think one of the advantages we have over high school, for example, is that, given the young age, the adaptability of kids is so fast. Like how, it's amazing even watching like students, like I said, we've had a few kiddos that came in in September, like not the English speakers, and their, like, their progress was like within like minutes. It's just like, it's really amazing, you know? So I think that you, talking to the state and talking to others, the adaptability was really was not a big hurdle that they faced, you know? And also, like, we talked about kind of supporting our, like I said, our school-wide social-emotional programs, you know what I mean? And like, what the things we'll have to work on is just kind of like how to welcome and how to wish somebody well, you know what I mean? And like, so there's a lot of things that we can kind of help have, make sure that our kiddos do have the language and do know how to kind of adapt. Like I said, kiddos usually are like, oh, you're new to the classroom, fantastic, welcome. Let me show you where my desk is, did you see my new ba-, you know what I mean? Like, I feel like kids are just so adaptable, you know what I mean? That's one of the beautiful things about this age, you know what I mean? Is that they are like, yeah.
No, I get that, I was seeing from like the parent, the parent aspect. It's like, I want my kid close, because you know, everything's new. I'm fearful, like, sending them away where I don't have control. You know, I can't put myself in that situation, I'm just trying to think that, like, not as powerful.
I'm sure the kids are, I think to Lauren's, sorry, to Lauren's prior point, like, I do think this has been incredibly stressful for everyone in the community, everyone in the system, the school system, the town, right? I think it is incredibly frustrating that we don't have numbers and answers, and we can't build out a plan without that. And I appreciate how much you have been following up and going after this, because, and even, you know, Lisa writing that letter, like I think, you know, we are doing, hopefully, more than, than, you know, just the base, and I really believe that we are. And so I thank you guys for thinking about it. And, you know, I appreciate that we don't have time to react, but luckily, we have a little time to react. It's not ideal, but we have something, and I think, you know.
And I've been overwhelmed by the number of people who have offered to volunteer time in the summer or support. So we do have a, we have a great team, and so we have resources to help us with the planning.
Doesn't change the fact that it's incredibly frustrating.
Thank you for answering this. I know I let this go for a long time, but I think really, people really do appreciate it. You got a lot of positive feedback from all the questions you took last time. People can see that you are being very thoughtful and thoughtful about this and advocating, so we do appreciate it. Becky, just my last question. Are you gonna be sharing the lessons like you usually do, so parents can kind of get it home?
I mean, I was gonna provide some resources for parents. These are a little bit different than the other ones, because they're really ones that we do already. Like I said, it's just like culminating. But if any individual parent wants someone happy to share.
Yeah, if you use typical, like, language at school, what kind of language you're using at school, parents can add at home as appropriate, but I think-
Yeah, I think in our next ones in words, we work, unless you do something.
Yeah, we have talked about, we have gotten some, some questions from parents about like, what books could I read to my child? We're good. Where could, so we are going to put in the Wednesday words and resources for families and some, you know, recommended books, things like that. So we'll put that in. Obviously, if anybody wants further information, we would provide it.
Okay.
But there are more social studies and physical education lessons.
Thank you for this thorough update.
It's, for the forum at the end of June, will like the school committee be involved? I mean, we don't have any answers, I just don't know what our...
Well, we don't know. That's something we don't know, because I haven't had a chance to meet with Rich. So we're going to talk about planning and the best structure for that and, and get some recommendations, not certainly getting put from, from the school committee members on, on what you'd like to play. I think the goal of the committee is that meaning it's going to be to get as much information out and to answer as many questions as we have from the public. So, you know, we'll know, I'll know more about what that could look like after I conclude on Friday.
The one thing, just to advocate for in that, and I might be, I'm not a KP school liaison, although I am a graduate. I think the concerns of the elementary population and parents, especially, I guess, because as a parent of an incoming kindergartner, might be unique to those of, you know, the more, the higher grades.
Yes.
So depend, it might just, we might want to think about how we structure just given that, right? Because the adaptability of the younger kids, plus, yeah, I think there's just different issues. There's also similar, but...
Yeah, we definitely can think about that. And I think if you have any questions in advance, we can make sure that when we present, we're sharing all of that information. And, and certainly, if anybody has questions after, they can always call me or send me an email. I'm happy to respond to that. But I do think we had a little bit of, of conversation about there might be some very different questions and concerns. At the same time, there's a lot of commonality that we, so we might do something together and then have follow-up Q and As separately.
Or like breakouts or something.
Yeah, we'll see.
We'll, we'll talk about that, I'll share that on Friday. All right, next, quarterly, for the school committee policy, every quarter, I provide a, the bullying situations. So at H L Day in the past quarter, there were no discipline issues or reports regarding bullying. At the Frampton Kennedy, there were two reports received. Both were fully investigated in accordance with procedures in the district prevention and intervention plans. And the incidents did not meet the criteria for bullying, but did require appropriate disciplinary measures for some of the policies. Again, we have a comprehensive bullying program in both schools and personnel. And on a positive side, our numbers have trended down, they trended up throughout COVID and our strikes have turned up down, so that's a problem. Questions on that? All right. I won't go through this quarter at length, but as you know, we, we're, every three years, districts are part of what's called TFM tiered focus monitoring. And it is a process with, with which we are audited in two phases. Group A looks at special education compliance with special education laws. It looks at Title I, and it looks at ELL. So compliance with all of the state federal mandates. And the, the second section accepts some special education standards and all of our requirements for civil rights. So anyone receiving federal and state funds is required to go through this. It's comprehensive, it probably took us, I would say, 200 hours, Ricky, would you say? There's a million standards that we're required to, well, not really a million, probably, but quite a few.
It was a significant number.
It was a significant number of standards. And we are required to do a self-assessment first, evaluate ourselves, upload evidence of compliance. And then after the state reviews all of the material we upload, they come, they spend a couple of days on site, they interview, they set out surveys to parents, all of our special education parents, they do focused interviews, they interview staff, and then they pull records. So after that process, we just got the final report, and we have no findings. So we are fully compliant.
Amazing.
That was a great achievement, so we will not have another one for another three years.
Yay.
But this goes online to the Department of Ed, it has to go in our library and other public locations. But we had a, it's very rare for a district to come out with no findings, so that was a huge achievement.
I was going to say, I thought you were going to say, we're going to frame it.
Well, if you have findings, you have to go through the whole process of, you know, record action, so it was, it was great. And kudos to all of our staff and to Dr. Cooper for all of her stuff with special education, our human resource office, Roxanne Bordeaux, and everybody who's responsible for our kind of practices and anything like that, so.
And it shows like how closely monitored we are too, you know what I mean? Like details, like it is a lot, so yeah.
Yeah, we had to upload like opening staff agendas and letters, and yes, it's intense. And Adrian credited all of the copies and all of the documents she had to pull and gather. That was a huge, huge, a lot of files, so that was a huge pull on her.
It looks like she doesn't want to be reminded.
She doesn't. Oh, doesn't. Three years. She'll come see me in three years.
Yeah, that's right. At the last meeting, we did not discuss school committee designated bill signers. So what that is, is that typically, the school committee votes to have the school committee chair be the approved signer for payroll warrants and, and supply and expense warrants. But in the past, the committee has voted to make all of the other members alternate signers. So we didn't take action on that item last time, so I think we, we need to take a recommendation and vote on designated bill signers. I don't know if you want to follow the same process we did in the past?
I, we just don't, do we designate one person and everybody else is alternate?
That's what we've done in the past. What we've done in the past is to vote to have the chair be the designated bill signer, and then everybody else voted to be approved as an alternate signer if...
We lost our audience.
It's the bills.
What a shame.
So it's beneficial. That way, if Lisa's away, then any other member of the committee could step up to sign. So that would be my recommendation, that we vote to appoint Lisa as a designated bill signer and all of the members of the committee as alternate bill signers. So I would need a motion on that one.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then the last thing in your pocket is, well, not the last thing, in fact, the last thing under my report is the draft school committee calendar. So typically, we meet on Tuesdays, and because the last meeting, people said that still worked. The only exception is August, we usually meet later in the month. We don't meet the second Tuesday. And that, that way, we're able to do an opening of school report. And we usually do the tour of the schools. And then the May meeting, we typically, or we might have to push that. Typically, we meet the third week of May because the town meeting is the second week. So we'll have to just switch the, the May meeting to the 20th, just because we certify election results and have to reorganize. So if this looks okay to people, I don't think we have to vote on it per se. But this is the draft calendar, because at each meeting, we, we make sure that it so works. But if this looks, we can post it as the tentative draft calendar.
All right. Could you remind me, what's the first day of school in August?
The 27th.
Okay.
I think it's 26th, but the 26th is our staff opening day, and the student opening day is the 27th.
27, and then kindergarten is late.
The kindergarten comes 28th and 29th.
Okay.
And then we have like a...
A visiting day on the 27th for kindergarten. Kindergartens come with their parents on the 27th to see the classrooms. The 28th, half the class comes, the 29th, the other half comes. And then the full class would come together on the 5th.
I know we don't have a meeting scheduled for July, but are people around if necessary?
Yeah, and I think actually no more. I think it might be some staff that can schedule an additional meeting. We can reach out to people when we feel like it's, it's appropriate, something we can get a form to do.
I have a question about September, is that okay? So I'm just thinking that we have a meeting on the 20th, and it's like the third week, it's our meeting again. Would it make, and we have a long, we, we don't, it's second and the third, we have like a super long weekend. Would it make sense? Well, we have enough to share, so close up, so we should push maybe one more week.
I think we, this is a tentative draft calendar. Typically, we do, because in August, we're telling, telling you like what open positions we still have, we're talking about transfers, we have to re-vote the budget if we have, after High School is done. And then usually, by the first week of September, we're recording on how open school, how to...
And potentially with the changes this year.
And maybe we might want to. But at the August meeting, if we decide, you know, we're meeting overloaded or we aren't, but how, we can always change that.
Okay.
All right, that's that.
Lisa, committee reports. King Philip, I went to my first KP meeting last night. And we reorganized, so Jim Leham is our chair, and Anna Carmen, who's also from Norfolk, is the vice chair. News from the meeting, congratulations to the KP seniors. They graduated on Sunday at Stonehill. And KP Middle School 8th grade awards night is this Thursday. Plainville and Retham, as you might know, approved the town budget, so KP is all set with their budget. Girls softball team today, playing in the champion, not the champion, they're in the playoffs, they're doing awesome. At the next school committee meeting, Dr. Dray is going to present their strategic plan that they've been working on, it's a five-year plan. And then August 7th, the committee is actually going to do a retreat and set school committee goals that are based off strategic goals, which is interesting. And then Dr. Dray, as we've heard all night, he and Ingrid have been in close contact and they're focused on this. So, any questions on KP? Building committee.
Building committee, I have nothing to report, as we don't meet till next week. But next week, we should have, I, I haven't heard anything different. So I think we should have some estimates for, or all the estimates that we're expecting, which is quite a few, on the three different modular options in the different tiers of building materials that they'll be made out of, so.
As well as the re-estimate on the brick and mortar original plan.
Yep, and re-estimate, I think, on the additional things that are kind of to the side. So we'll have more to report in August or July. And I assume if there's something that we really felt the need to share with the committee, we will, so.
Yep, great. And then items, the school partners renew the Norfolk Alliance, I didn't see it.
No, they, they did get the paperwork in, so we'll put that on August.
Table that till August. And then did everyone have a chance to read last minutes? Okay, so have a motion to approve the May 21st, 2024 minutes.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next school committee. Our next school committee meeting is August 21st, H 24. Does anyone have anything else?
We have to do the contract now that we have...
They voted to approve it, so before they leave, they just have to sign it.
Okay.
Did you, if...
If we need to add anything in July, we can just send out an email.
Do you want to go through like, I thought it was during the meeting, the process? Like, if we have anything to add to the agenda, that we'll just let you know, like, for the next time?
Yeah, if anyone ever has, okay. I was going to wait till Peter got it, just because he said...
Oh, yeah, we'll go with that, I just, I thought I missed it.
Yeah, if both of you ever want to add anything to the agenda at all, just shoot me an email and I can do that.
I'm going to make these meetings go till 11 o'clock.
I know, I know, it's been great. It was long, I think the update, the conversations are important.
Just update on me.
So I appreciate that. So, and I would just look for our motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.